Let me call the December 11, 2014 meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of our council. Welcome. We're glad you could be here tonight. Let us start off this evening with the roll call, please. Ms. Sarcisi.
Ms. Duro.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Ms. Hannigan.
Here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Mrs. Tully.
Here.
For our pledge of allegiance, our council president, Dave Engel, will lead us, and for the invocation, Jan Tully will lead us.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's the holiday season. It's not just time for buying gifts, but a time for joy, reflection, and sharing of peace. Tonight we gather to care for our residents, our businesses, and our employees. Help us to work as five, together, as we close out 2014 and look forward to 2015. And from all of us, regardless of your persuasion, we wish you a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, safe travels, and a very blessed New Year. Amen.
All right, we have some minutes. Regular minutes of the October 23, November 13 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept?
Second.
I would like to hold the November 13 minutes. I did have a chance to just go through them. There are some items in there that need to be adjusted.
Let me second that. I think they said October, though. You're only on a --
They said both.
Oh, you didn't say both?
They're both.
Okay.
So we could go with just the --
October 23, then.
Right.
Second.
We have October 23. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
All right. The next is the section of the meeting where we do proclamations. And this evening, we have a young lady that's going to do a proclamation that went to the Manor House. Teri Hjudek, would you please come up to the mic and read us that proclamation? Thank you.
This is from John Kasich, Governor of the state of Ohio. It says that a name and by the authority of the state of Ohio, John R. Kasich and Mary Taylor, Governor and Lieutenant Governor of Ohio, do hereby officially recognize Longwood Manor and farm upon the placement of National Register of the Historical Places plaque. Recomend all those involved in cooperation with the Longwood Manor Historical Society for raising awareness of our state's unique heritage by erecting a National Register of Historical Places plaque. These plaques reflect and honor the people, places, and events associated with our state's rich history, and through this reflection, encourage appreciation of our past as we look to our future. Thank you for your commitment to ensuring our state's history is preserved and remembered on the 16th day, November 2014. And John R. Kasich, his signature, Mary Taylor, Lieutenant Governor's signature, and then here is a copy of the gold seal that was on the original. And I would like to thank each and every one of the city who has contributed by turning on our electricity, and we have some heat there now, so all the work that has been accomplished by the electricity being turned on and the light and the heat, we don't have to worry about anything crumbling and coming apart again. So thank you, each and every one, and may God bless each and every one of us here, and may God bless each and every one of our families for the remainder of this December and for the oncoming year. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thanks, Teri. Very nicely done. The next section of the meeting is comments by the public. To comment, we ask you to sign our sign-in sheet. We ask you to come to the front to the microphone. Please give us your name and your address, and five-minute speaking limit is the max. So tonight, we're going to start with Stephen Knotts. Stephen?
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you for listening to me here. This is on about Lake Forest Estates with the waterway issue. So just a brief history, over the last four years, it's been issues of sand and debris and complaints from a number of residents. And a stream, a creek, of this length and size, 42-inch culverts, within the city is normally maintained by some sort of governmental entity, as county, city, or otherwise. I've asked four engineers, two of which worked at the Army Corps of Engineers, explain the situation. They've never heard of anything that is this long, this many hundreds of acres, and this size, being maintained by a patchwork of homeowners. It's interesting, I spoke to Nick right before the meeting, he has a plat of this same stream that on the plat, it shows that it was going to be an easement, an easement for the city to maintain it. Now, why that didn't happen, I'm not sure, but he has that, so you're more than willing. I assume he'll show that to you a little later on. And I truly appreciate the council members who came out and spent time there, and I believe the mayor came out, I wasn't available that day, but, you know, so I know there's time invested in looking into this. According to neighbors who've been living there for the last 10 years, it's gotten worse, and they believe in large part due to large amounts of sand that have washed down and are filling or constraining the stream. There's been a lot of discussion whether it's naturally occurring or from a business upstream. To me, that's irrelevant. If it's naturally occurring, it should have been designed for that. If it's a city, if it's a business upstream, then get the sand tested and, you know, go after the business. I mean, to me, it's there. We all know it's there. Currently, the city gets temporary -- my understanding, could be wrong in this, gets temporary access to clean the culverts that go under River Run, which is a dedicated city street. To me, that, you know, if there's an emergency or some situation, or worst case, if the street washes out because you can't get in to do maintenance, it's an untenable situation. The city, you know, needs to protect its infrastructure and its assets, so we're here to request that you approve the $3,000 in legal work to get the easements underway. It would ensure that professionals have access to the property and perform, you know, unrestricted access, because I know there's some homeowners that currently won't allow certain members of the city to be on the property. So I mean, you know, there's been other issues that occur out there, but perform routine maintenance and emergency repairs if needed. If the road were to wash out, it would cut off a number of residents, you know, from emergency access vehicles and so forth. So a number of homeowners and our HOA president, who is here this evening as well, came before council a few months ago. This issue was discussed. We understood it would be an expensive repair, therefore came up with a solution which is very inexpensive and addresses the problem. And one other point, the building commissioner at the last meetings agreed that he has not really seen and normally a stream of this size would again have an easement, you know, for a city to go ahead and do maintenance on it. So this collaborative inexpensive solution is to deed maintenance easement access rights to the city for this extremely large stream. This way, the city does not have to be concerned with receiving short-term access rights, and they can protect the deeded streets. Again, we ask you approve the $3,000 in legal work tonight and move forward to get this waterway under an easement by the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, our next reader is Laura. Laura, please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Steve's wife, Laura Knotts, and we live at 1196 Stony Brook Circle in Lake Forest. And I just want to emphasize that these culverts are not your average-size residential culverts. These are the type of culverts that you would see possibly going under a highway. They're three and a half feet in diameter. The average residential culvert, I believe, is 12 inches compared to 42 inches for the one that goes, carries water from this major stream. So, you know, it really is not logical for a stream of this magnitude running under a city street to be maintained by a patchwork of owners. The cost to get it under an easement and the costs for the city to provide routine maintenance would be nothing compared to the cost of fixing the damage to roads that could occur over time from water hitting the bottleneck as it goes through a clogged culvert, which is getting clogged because of the sand, but it's, you know, it's easy to maintain, it's easy to get out, it's just a problem if you've got that amount of water trying to make its way through these bottlenecks. Thank you.
Go forward.
Bless you.
God bless you.
Next, we have Shirley Couth. Shirley?
God bless you. Shirley Couth, 902 Eileen Drive. Got a couple of things. First of all, I really want to thank the service department and the council people that worked on our project on Eileen Drive, and I think right at this point, we have all our questions in to everybody. We've had all our answers on it, and when they pick up again in the spring to finish that up, I think everything's going to be fine. So anyway, I just wanted to thank everybody for all the work you did on that. Also, I want to say that I am thrilled to death that we're going to have a budget at the end of the year for the upcoming year. For many years, it has been a thorn in my side that we didn't have a budget until we were going into the very last minute that we had to submit it, and we were going, doing continuing resolutions or whatever it was, a quarter of the budget here for the first part of the year drove me nuts. So I am thrilled to death that even though we may not have a perfect paper, we may not have things that don't need to be adjusted as the year goes along, but that happens anyway, but I am thrilled to death that there is a budget that'll be in place for January 1st, 2015. So thank you, everybody. I know it was a painful process, you know, but I'm thrilled. Also, as I'm looking through all the ordinances here, I know a lot of these ordinances are because of the detailed line items and everything on the budget, and my thoughts on that have always been that the budget seemed to be presented in a, I don't know what word to use, kind of a inconsistent and not maybe well thought out in detail. And I think that this year maybe has shown a lot of that, resulting in a lot of these things having to come up to change this, to move that, and all of that. And I just think it's part of the process to get to the point where we're actually knowing what's going into a line item. I think department heads are going to be a lot more aware of what they have to put into a line item, rather than maybe just putting a number in a line item and thinking, well, I can always move something from here later, or something like that. And I think, I feel that we're getting a better grip on where the money, what money's coming in, where the money is being spent, how it's being spent, and I don't know that there's a better way in the future on when the department heads put together their budgets for the year to help them with some sort of a document or something that is consistent between the departments to help everybody get to the final result so that we don't have so many inconsistencies. But again, I think it's just a process, and I am very glad to see that happening because I think it's getting a better grip on our city's finances, and I am glad to see that. Also, the recording of the meetings, I want to look at the meeting, the last meeting from last week on TV, and it chops it off before it's done. So I don't know what's going on as far as various things with the recording, or is it being turned over to the, to Cable 9, but something still isn't right. So from what I saw, at least in this one, the recording was okay up to this point, and then all of a sudden, I can't remember where it chopped it off, but it got to a point, chopped it off and went to everybody's names and all this other stuff. And so I know one other meeting, we'd had problems with it, you know, like stopping and delaying and then, you know, coming up and just being very inconsistent, very poor in the quality, and I don't know what the problem is. Many, some of that may already be resolved, but we just put in a new sound system, and I know allocated money for that because we wanted something better. And I don't think we're getting what we paid for at this point. So I just think that needs to be resolved because it's very frustrating to those of us that do have cable and do watch it. So, and I know we can get it other places. I don't necessarily like to sit down and watch it on my computer, but I'll do that if that's my only other option. So anyway, I just wanted to ask that that be looked into and tried to be made better as the year goes on. Okay, thank you.
Shirley, if I may, your honor, our mayor, sure. In regard to your comment about getting the budget done before the year, that's, this is the first time that it's ever happened, and that means I don't have to worry about reserving March 31st for a council meeting. But the real force behind getting this started in October and kicking butt until we got it done was, was our finance director, Sylvia. So she's the one who really deserves the credit.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And I will say, I leaned on her very hard all year.
Well, it worked.
That I wanted that done. So anyway, all right, well, thank you. Thank you, Sylvia.
All right, next is Kevin Bilkey. Kevin?
Good evening. So I have a few questions. I know a lot of people come in and read statements, I just kind of wanted answers. The first thing was, last time I was here, we, I guess, voted and we got testing done on the sand. I wanted to know if there was any results that we can report back to the, oh, first of all, I'm Kevin from Lake Forest Estates and the president of the HOA, I'm sorry about that. Do we have any results that I can report back to the people who not only live in that affected area, but other people around the neighborhood also interested in hearing the results? Anybody?
Yeah, we have. We got the results.
We had the results. In fact, one of your residents, Mr. Mahalchik, requested it in a records request, and he sent it in. But it, basically, their opinion on this first test we took is that it's a natural, it's from the sandstone, it's breaking apart, and that's where this, all this sand is coming from. I know that we talked about going further, but to do further testing is expensive. It's, for the first test, it's 2,500, second test, it's another 2,500, so it costs another 5,000. I have the funds for that, but I need permission from the council if they want to go further with the testing, and if they give me the go-ahead, I will do that. But I think we're going to come up with the same conclusion, that it's, it's a natural sand process, but if it will ease a lot of minds, and council says go with it, we'll go with it.
Well, you know, I think the first thing here is, we need to get Kevin a copy of that. I'm amazed you didn't get that.
I did not.
Oh, that's --
Mr. Matejewicz does not share very much with me.
Yeah.
I can get him.
I would comment that although it was, we were doing testing, it didn't turn out to be like a quantitative scientific test, it was an observation. Somebody, a geologist, went out and walked.
Is there any opinions of how we can, I guess, slow down, even if it is a natural occurrence?
I'm sure that --
Yeah, I mean, the initial opinion is some sort of a stormwater management facility upstream.
Now, is that something that the city of Macedonia would take on?
If I can interject, if I may?
Sure.
You're right, these are good questions, and that is a possibility. Mrs. Daro had asked for a work session. We were, we have, I think, 20 or some pieces of legislation tonight, and I dotted on my notes to discuss with council before we came out, and I forgot, but I was able to talk to two or three people, and the general consensus is that we need to have a work session immediately after the first of the year to start developing that plan. We do have money in our budget for additional water runoff projects. We've funded a couple, fairly large one, in fact, first time we've ever funded something that large. So we're moving forward, and we need to, we need to discuss those. We know that the $3,000 for the legal fees needs to be discussed. There are some issues that the law department has to be involved in, including the fact that the type of work we're doing on private versus public property, those things have to be ironed out. I was surprised to hear for the first time tonight that the original easements, or the original plats as drawn showed an easement that was then removed. I find that very interesting. So I think where we're at tonight is that we're going to try to start this process, and council is going to invite Nick, Mr. Digatano, and probably a representative from the law department to a work session to begin this process.
That's funny, then my second question was about the process.
You just heard.
I mean, I, me and Steve had talked on the phone and through email, and I, I mean, I don't want to speak for him, but we thought that his easement was pretty much a done deal after we came to the, after the last meeting. We talked about it openly, it seemed like everybody on the council was on board to do it, and now we hear that it's not going to happen. So if you can kind of walk me through the process.
You didn't say it wasn't going to happen.
Well, okay. I guess when we come to the meeting, we miss jeopardy, and every time that we have to come here on a Thursday night, it takes away from our families, and so --
Ours too.
But you guys are elected. I mean, we're doing this because we need something done in our neighborhood, and am I speaking for you, Steve, that you thought this was supposed to already be done, correct?
I thought it was moving forward. Kevin, I can explain some of the things, and I know you know that I've been working on some of the resolve for your problem. I've been working with engineering and the building department to come up with a solution to the problem, and one of the things that we, we came up with was the easement to take control of that stream, so that would be the city's responsibility to maintain that. Given the size and complexity of it, I feel it's necessary. I know we've talked about it on this floor. There's been some spirited emails that floated around regarding the situation, which I think was a misunderstanding, but at the end of the day, what I'm trying to accomplish for you guys in your neighborhood is for us to take responsibility for that stormwater easement. I've worked with Nick, and I got an email today from Nick actually stating that it's pretty complicated. You know, you have to have a legal department and an engineering department to get this thing done the right way. I know there was a comment about looking on Google Earth and figuring out that way, but I don't like opening us up to legalities. I want to do it the right way with the professionals in the field to identify what we need to do to make that our responsibility. I've looked at the, it's actually a bridge, and I know I've said it to Steve in front of his house. I don't know, did anyone get water plug on the edge of the culvert there? I think that's something we may be able to help with, just to patch it up in the interim. I got to work with Jim on that, but ultimately, my goal and what I'm trying to accomplish is us to take control of that waterway. I mean, there's, it's too large and complex for that to be on the homeowners there. Mr. Engel and I have been actually talking and had some good dialogue as to, you know, if we do it for one, do we do it for all, as if the whole city, I mean, how many do we, have we assumed up to this point? But given that you guys have brought this to our attention, at this point, now we have to deal with it. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. I have to get the final legislation from Nick. I know he's been working hard on it, it's pretty complex, but that's kind of where we're at with it.
I guess I've, how many other situations are like this in Macedonia where there's no easement? If that's what's holding it up, is there a number of how many storm drains, is that what it's called, that are not currently controlled by the city? Do we know that answer?
I've actually asked that question, and that's something I, I was, I actually emailed Nick that, I think Tuesday, to ask that very question, because I want to look into, I'm not sure. I really don't know that answer.
Well, Mr. Bilkey, if I could make a comment.
Sure.
I've been hearing this, and of course, I do agree, we do need a work session, just to understand, first, what is it that we want to accomplish? And I think from my standpoint, what we want to accomplish is prevention. And Mr. Feeney talked about the need for stormwater control, and perhaps a detention base, and I'm not sure what he's referring to. But if the idea that we want to have that amount of sand come rolling through the, any size ditch, but certainly that 42-inch one, is a very bad idea because it's affecting all of the systems here. In your, in your, in your homeowner's group, you're going to be affected, not just one or two houses. So I want to see what we can do to actually correct the problem so that you're not getting the kind of overflow that you're getting from Twinsburg Township, which is what is happening to you.
And I don't mean to be rude, but this started in June. I mean, we were here in June talking about this.
Right.
Mr., I don't know how to say it, Mr. Matejewicz said, he's been talking for 10 years about it.
Mm-hmm.
And so it seems like the gears are turning very slow, but now it's affecting a homeowner that is having problems with it. And it's not that, the sand's not even the issue with him, it's a totally different issue. You know, the sand and the easement are two different things.
Well, the sand is actually creating problems.
It's a process. Again, we get that.
Yes, it is, sir.
I appreciate that.
I actually was out there and walked the whole thing, and I know Mr. Knotts, and I see what's going on, and I think there is a solution, but what we need to understand is exactly what our alternative is. We don't want to keep having a bunch of slaves dig out sand out of places, right? We want to come up with the right solution. So if it, if it takes up through the next couple of months, then that's what we're going to take, but it is brought to our attention, we do know about it, and I for one want to see a solution, that's all.
I think we do, too.
Okay.
So let's work together to get one.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to schedule a meeting in January. Hopefully, I'll work with you to get that, you know, meeting date and everything out to the homeowners, but essentially, I have the legislation almost completely drafted. It's going to come up in January, it's just figuring out what the rest of council wants to do with it.
I'm going to try to say this as easy as I can. I would love to be invited, if that's at all possible.
They're all public meetings.
But it's a public meeting, that means all the people from Lake Forest Estates would be --
No, it's for you and all the homeowners.
I know. I guess that would be the problem in some areas, too.
We always invite you.
Okay. Well, happy holidays, and see you guys next year.
You know, your point's well taken. It seems like we procrastinate on a lot. The roads this year, boy, we heard a lot about, we talked about them, we talked about them, we talked about them, and, you know, we didn't do them. So your point is very well taken, and the fact that procrastination needs to be put to the side, and action needs to be done. And Mr. Molnar has really taken the gauntlet up to get the facts together for all of us so that we can have an intelligent meeting with you and get off the procrastination and get into the action in the first of the year.
Jim, get him a copy of that.
What, what, he asked for a vote. I guess when I asked about the process, he asked for you guys to vote on it tonight. Is that something that could happen tonight? Or is that put into agenda and then pushed back?
What I'm asking for is the $3,000 for engineering and legal to draw the documents up to get that easement so that we can begin to take responsibility for it. I think, I don't think that that's, I can't speak for everyone else, but that's a very nominal fee to get that taken care of. Where we progress from there is what we need to do from that point on. This is just the initial step to get the easement so we can go do work there.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That is normal.
And I, like I, like I talked to you earlier, I'm going to propose that at the end of our legislation tonight to appropriate the $3,000 for us to put that easement through. So then we can fund it, and they can begin to get that going, and we can move forward.
You know, if I may say this, I'm not sure that that is the solution, and it's not that I object to $3,000, but we frankly have had no discussion of this at a detailed level to get a solution that, you know, we've had discussion just at a very high level. And our responsibility in the city is to make sure that we're coming to the solution that is correct.
See, that's very frustrating because we have had conversations with you about it.
Well, you have, sir.
There's multiple meetings that we've come here with the same problem.
Well, let's look at it this way. We have, we have an ability to look at this problem, we will be doing that in January, and you're invited to that meeting, and we will be able to address, I believe, in a comprehensive way, what's needed. We don't have a really clear picture of what's needed because we've never had a detailed engineering discussion about any of this. That's what I'm telling you. There's been a lot of discussion in general, but no detailed plan about what to actually do to correct the problem. So I know that it's frustrating, but it's frustrating to me, too, that we haven't had that, so thanks.
Hey, Nick, I know we've talked about this in our meetings, can you touch on this briefly as to what we discussed, I mean, in regards to the storm system, that, you know, what we need to do in order to get in there and start to begin to deal with it? I mean, the $3,000 is the initial to get the easement, to get the legalities taken care of so we can begin to work on it. Technically, you can't step onto that property and do anything until we have that, correct?
Yeah, I believe in the past, we've had temporary rights of entry for Jim to get out there and clean out this culvert in front of John's property.
But the culvert's a whole other issue from the entire stormwater system. I mean, it's that, the culvert's right in front -- I mean, it's that, the culvert's right in front of the house, we're talking about the entire system that runs through all those properties. So basically, I'm asking you, we need to have an easement in order to, to begin to try and correct that. Because if we, we could talk about it till we're blue in the face, they've been here since June. We know there's a problem there, but we need to get engineering out there to determine what we need to do, and that's what I'm trying to convince these folks of.
I've got a pretty good idea.
I'm not trying to be combative, I'm just saying.
Well, you are being combative, because we have been discussing this, and quite frankly, you kept this your little secret project, and you haven't included us at all. And now you spring on us at the mid, in the meeting, oh, I'm going to come forward and ask for three thousand dollars for an easement that nobody really knows what.
I told you that before the meeting.
It's really not fair.
I told you that before the meeting.
You didn't tell me we were going to do that, Nick.
Oh, Dave, come on.
Nick, I'm trying to work with you, but as I sent a, an email to you six weeks ago, when there was a flurry of activity, there are three legal opinions that suggest very strongly that we can't do this. I don't, I want to have the law department involved in the process. I understand these people have a problem, I want to deal with their problem. But at the same time, there are people all over the city that have water problems, we don't know how many. I think what we need to do is to develop a plan that will address the whole city. It's, we get in big trouble when we blunder through the world trying to solve problems piecemeal. All I want to do is to come up with an effective solution on how we address these issues in the future, so that we can tell that the law, the service department, this is the policy, this is what you need to do, you need to protect the people. So I really think it's, you know, it's unfair to just say, oh, we're going to do three thousand dollars, and that's going to take care of the problem. It's not.
What, what I did say, and I may, maybe you misunderstood, was that we would begin to try and understand what the problem was. What, hold on, timeout please. I, I'm going to take you back to the summertime, when Ms. Darrow called me up and said, I need your help, can you go talk to Mr. Manajsek? She asked me to come into the situation and try and help get some resolve, handing it off to me. That's what I've done up to this point. All I've been doing is listening to the residents and their concerns and the problems, walking through the stormwater system, taking emails back and forth, that's all that's really happened. So I've come up with a solution to begin to deal with that problem. I appreciate what you're saying with the legality piece of it, and maybe that's something we ought to look into, but all I'm trying to do is to try and help to start to resolve the issue. We can talk about this till we're blue in the face, there is a problem there, we know there's a problem there.
And, and Nick, I'd like to say, I did not call you and ask you to talk to J-, uh, Mr. Manajsek. Mr. Manajsek came up here and spoke in front of us, and he made an appointment with you, and he made an appointment with him. I had nothing to do with that, so please do not say that.
You called me and asked me to help, big deal.
No, no, I.
What's the relevance in all this?
I said to, to try to work with two gentlemen from that homeowners' association, and you did, and thank you. But you made an appointment with, with Mr. Manajsek, and so did Mr. Engel. I had nothing to do with it, did he not come up to the podium? And you guys all made appointments with the man? Don't say that I called you to go talk to this man, because he came here and made the appointment himself with you. And so did Kevin, and I asked you to go see Kevin and him together.
Could we just maybe move on with the meeting? We've got a lot of things going on tonight. Kevin, you're going to get answers. When you talk about stormwater in the city of Macedonia, we actually formed a stormwater committee, went out and did all kinds of work, trying to determine what we needed to do throughout the city, not just your development. So far, one project has been done. This year, we will have the second project. I feel real good about that, because prior to this, we did zip, all right, as far as stormwater. So stormwater's coming into play more and more and more, and we are getting more and more in order to deal with it. Nick's got a whole stormwater study that was performed on the whole city. So there are a lot of problems, and yours is now one of those problems that needs to be addressed, okay? And we'll move on, because we've got a lot of work to do tonight. There's no other speakers, so we're going to go right into pending in or new legislative items. Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, since we're in a pending legislative, I'd like to make a motion to move resolution, and it will be numbered one twenty-one, it's the very last ordinance dealing with retainer and hourly services provided by Director of Law and the Law Department to the, to get to the first position tonight. Is there a motion, a second?
Second.
All right. We have motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to introduce, ordinance one twenty-one, for a first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Now, what's your pleasure? Oh, you got to read it, okay.
A resolution clarifying the retainer and hourly services provided by the Director of Law and the Law Department.
And what's your pleasure, Dave?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to amend ordinance resolution, I'm sorry, one twenty-one, two thousand fourteen, and remove the one doll, one hundred and forty dollars per hour in the two locations, and substitute in one twenty-eight fifty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we post, and we pass and post ordinance, uh, resolution, I'm sorry, one twenty-one, two thousand fourteen, as amended according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
I'd like to thank Mr. Engel, our President of Council, for taking the time to work with our legal department to come up with some resolve. This has been a sticking point for a long time, and I'm, I'm happy to see that we've finally come up with some resolution. So Dave, I, I thank you wholeheartedly for what you've done, yes.
Thank you, Nick, I appreciate that, and I, I apologize if I was a little heated before, and.
Mr. President, one other change should be noted in there somewhere, it's effective January one, two thousand fifteen.
Oh, you're right.
Just looking at it now, that clause.
A motion should do that.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend, a second time to include the effective date is January first, two thousand fifteen. Thank you, Mr. Engel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
So I, I move that we pass and post ordinance, um, one twenty-one, resolution one twenty-one, two thousand fourteen, as amended twice according to law.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tully?
I'd like to also echo the comments of Mr. Molnar. I thank Mr. Engel when he contacted me to let me know that he had had the meeting, he also let us know, I believe via email, and I appreciate him taking his time to do that for us, it's something we've asked for this year. So I vote yes.
And last but not least, thank you, Dave.
Thank you all.
All right, now, we're going to go back to our scheduled pending in or new legislative items, starting with number, ordinance number one sixteen, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one sixteen, twenty fourteen, for its third reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for the twenty fifteen annual appropriations.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer amendments to that. I do have a amendment sheet that I provided to council and clerk, to amend the twenty fifteen final appropriations for four oh one capital funds. And as listed, I would like to amend the, have the amendment, have all those things adjusted. In addition, there are two items, one oh one, one fifty, fifty-three forty. It should be amended to show ninety-six thousand. And one oh one, one fifty-five, three, four, five, should be amended to show thirty thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? And what's your pleasure?
I, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I move that we pass and post, according to law, ordinance, excuse me, when I go back and look, one sixteen, two thousand fourteen, as amended.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance one sixteen, two thousand fourteen passes. Ordinance number one seventeen, two thousand fourteen.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one seventeen, twenty fourteen, for its third reading by title only.
An ordinance establishing the pay range schedule of compensation for the employees of Macedonia effective January one, twenty fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer an amendment to this ordinance section six, to strike the last sentence, all department head merit raises must be approved by council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Aye, our name.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Is this for the, for, for the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, no, remove.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Ms. Hanekin?
No.
Mr. Molnar?
Just a brief explanation, so the public understands what this is. There's a schedule of compensation for the employees within the city that was renewed, and I believe Ms. Hanekin had made an amendment in there to have council determine whether or not the mayor giving a department head a raise was appropriate or not. I feel that the administration should be able to make that determination. We're talking about one to three percent, that's what the mayor's elected to do, not council, we're here to be legislators, not administrators. So with that, I vote yes.
Uh, Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
All right, the motion fails. To explain a little further, we have a system set up. Whenever raises are given to department heads, they are up to three percent of the mid-range of their pay. These are merit raises, and they are done after a form has been filled out, listing all the reasons why this department head needs a raise. This has been something the administration's been doing for a long time, and I have to say, in the past, there was a three-year stretch when all of my department heads gave up raises voluntarily, because the city was in a bad financial fix. I feel this is something that is administratively, as, as the administrator of the city, I should have the right to do, without council having input on it, because they already gave me input by setting up the rules that have to be followed in order to give that raise. What's your pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the ordinance number one seventeen, twenty fourteen, in two places. One is the updated table that was confirmed by personnel for the actual minimum, maximum, mid-range and maximum amounts for the employee pay range schedule. And I'd also like to amend the reference in there to the Law Department, the amount should read ninety-six thousand dollars versus reading what it does now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? And what's your pleasure?
I'd like to, I move that we pass and post ordinance one seventeen, twenty fourteen, as amended, uh, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
One more thing I forgot to point out, this was never discussed. This was just added in there without any discussion. No.
Uh, Mrs. Tully?
I believe very strongly, in separation of legislative and administrative, that's what the charter was voted in for by the residents of this community. We are legislative, we're not administrative, we don't administer the employees of this city, just like in any business, or corporation, or any other public entity. I vote no, just based on the fact that I disagree that we're going to have the key to hold whether someone gets a pay raise or not, and that's not our job.
Joe, I need you to check if that's a violation of the charter, if you get a chance, because it's just wrong to do that. Ordinance one twenty-two, two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, it's all, it's all done.
We're moving on to the next one.
I don't, did you guys vote? Did you vote? I didn't hear you vote, Jan, I'm sorry.
We're done.
Okay.
We completed the vote.
All right, I wasn't sure, I didn't, I don't remember Jan voting.
Ordinance one twenty-two, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one twenty-two, two thousand fourteen, by title only, please, for its first, second, and third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance confirming the final appointment of Terrence Snyder by the mayor to the position of full-time police officer.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I asked that we po, uh, pa, uh, post, uh, pass and post ordinance number one twenty-two, um, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Congratulations to Terry, um, thank you for voting him in, we'll make sure he gets that word down. All right. Ordinance one twenty-three, two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance one twenty-three, two thousand fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance creating special fund two-two-six, police K-nine donation fund.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance one twenty-three, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance one twenty-three, uh, two thousand fourteen passes. John, could you give us a quick update on our K-nine?
Haro started a week and a half ago, out on the street, uh, he's already been at the high school, uh, gone through there a little bit, met the principals, uh, saw some kids, had a good time up there. He's on the street, he will be assigned to his permanent, uh, it's like a semi float shift, it's going to be some afternoons, a day shift here and there, but he's going to work the in-between days and night shifts. He is out there, it's a nice dog, I put some pictures on Facebook, I don't know, a lot of hits on that particular Facebook page, everybody likes a dog, but, uh, he's out there, page, everybody likes a dog, but, uh, he's out there, he's doing well, nice, uh, nice dog, sharp looking.
And a lot of people like to donate towards our dog, so now we have a way for them to do that.
Yeah, people have been asking, uh, we got a check from, uh, Mike Solemy, who does fantastic stuff for us, telecom communications, um, made a donation, and, uh, some other folks, so now at least we have a place where we can start taking some of those funds and paying some of the bills. He needs a bite sleeve, he needs a few other things, so we're gonna, we're gonna work with that, but yeah, we appreciate, uh, every donation we get for it.
John, what's the dog's name?
Haro, H-A-R-O, Haro.
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 Resolution number one twenty-four, two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer resolution one twenty-four, two thousand fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A final resolution requesting the director of transportation to proceed with the improvements to State Route eighty-two and declaring an emergency.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution one twenty-four, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance one twenty-four, two thousand fourteen passes. Ordinance number one twenty-five, two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance number one twenty-five for its first reading by title only, please.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry, we don't need a second, I apologize.
An ordinance amending, uh, codified ordinance nine-two-three-zero-nine-C-two-B-two by creating an annual escrow, uh, fee for inspections and administration of long-term maintenance agreements regarding post-construction water quality practice.
And what's your pleasure?
Nope, they only did first.
Okay. Ordinance one twenty-six, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one twenty-six for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
Roll, all in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Life Insurance Company of North, uh, North America, a subsidi, subsidy, a subsidiary of Signet Group Insurance in order to supply life insurance benefits to qualified employees.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number one twenty-six, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance one twenty-seven, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one twenty-seven, two thousand and fourteen for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Humana, uh, comp benefits for the purpose of supplying Vision Health Care to qualified City of Macedonia employees beginning January one, twenty fifteen, and ending December thirty-first, twenty sixteen.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance one twenty-seven, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance one twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen.
Before I offer it, I do take one minute to say thank you to Betsy for all of the, our HR coordinator. Um, everyone who goes through this every year knows that it, it can be painful, to say the least, for the coordinator to go out and look and find the best of benefits for your employees at the best cost for the organization, so I appreciate what you've done on all of these. So with that said, I'd like to offer ordinance number one twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Delta Dental Insurance for dental benefits for eligible Macedonia employees for year twenty fifteen.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number one twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar? Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance one twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one twenty-nine, twenty fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance renewing the EEP contract with Tri-County Employee Assistance Program for year twenty fifteen.
And what's your pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance number one twenty-nine, twenty fourteen, and according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance one thirty, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance one thirty, um, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance appropriating funds and authorizing the per, appropriating funds and authorizing the purchase of twelve automated external defibrillators from Physio Control Inc. for use by the fire, police, and recreation departments of the City of Macedonia.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I, I ask that we, uh, pass and post ordinance number one thirty according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance one thirty-one, two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance one thirty-one, two thousand fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation and payment of the city's portion of an ODNR Nature Works grant for the restoration of Sugar Bush Park.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance one thirty-one, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance one thirty-two, two thousand fourteen.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one thirty-two, two thousand and fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance appropriating funds and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Fred Azar Landscaping for a senior gutter cleaning program for the fall twenty-fourteen season.
Mrs. Tully, would you like to address this a little bit?
This, uh, was a question that had been asked by several of the seniors, uh, could we assist them? It is something we had done a long time ago via grant, in cleaning out their gutters of the leaves. And we all know what happens if you don't clean out your gutters, and then it gets cold, and then the ice backs up, and then, I mean, hopefully none of you have faced that, but it does happen. So council, we worked together with, uh, Jim, our service director, to get some bids. We are not going to be doing this in-house, we are not doing this with the volunteers. We're actually hiring this company that will go out with a two-man crew that have a ladder and a backpack blower, buckets, and a dump truck. So they're not only gonna clean them out, but take it away, which is even better, so we won't be seeing them sitting on the tree lawn. So I appreciate, uh, Jim, you're taking the time to go off and look for the information and actually go out and do this. You also notice this says fall two thousand fourteen, it's not, it's not winter yet, until the twenty-first, so we're still in the fall, so this is for this year. So with that said, Mayor, I'd offer that we pass and post according to law, ordinance one thirty-two, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Uh, yes, I, um, I might, my vote is yes, but, uh, Jan, this is just for the ones that signed up for...
Yes. And we have approximately ninety...
Seventy-five.
He said seventy-five.
At this point, we only have seventy-five.
Right, because nothing like that was mentioned, and so for anybody that signed up for the snow plowing and trash removal, and if you already registered, I believe that you qualify for this, so you probably wanna contact Jim if you, if nobody's contacted you and you need it done, but my vote is yes, and thank you, Jan.
Uh, Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes, uh, just to reiterate, it's for low-income senior list, so just be sure we follow that.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance one thirty-three, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one thirty-three, twenty fourteen, uh, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds from unencumbered fund balance to provide for current expenses of the City of Macedonia.
Do we suspend rules?
And what's your pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend ordinance one thirty-three, twenty fourteen, to, for the law department appropriation to be fifty-five thousand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question.
I, yes.
Did we move to suspend the rules on this or not?
This one you've had in your packet.
So this is the third time we've had it?
No, no, this one, this one you've had since Tuesday.
I understand.
Yeah, but we have to suspend the rules.
Okay, Rita didn't think we'd done that.
No, no, this, this was, you received this in your e-packet on Tuesday.
Well, we know, but...
She was not sure that we had offered it for, for, for...
For second and third reading.
Yes, Ms. Hannekin did, and Ms. Tully was the second.
Okay.
Yes, she did.
I didn't hear all in favor, and we all say aye, or...
Yes.
Okay.
You got to that part.
All right, just making sure.
Okay.
All right, now we're at the part with...
All right, now we had a mo, amendment, and I only got one, aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, what's your pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance one thirty-three, twenty fourteen. Pass and post this according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
No.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
No. And the reason is that, you know, this particular amount of money was, was, uh, actually obligated before there was a purchase order or any appropriation, and I do not believe we should do that in any case, so I am, uh, voting no.
Did I miss you, Mr. Engel?
I voted yes.
Oh.
Yes, you called me and I said yes.
Okay. And Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance one thirty-four, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one thirty-four for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the annual appropriations ordinance number twenty-six, two, uh, twenty-six, twenty fourteen, sorry.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I ask that we, uh, pass and post ordinance number one thirty-four according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Tully?
A resounding yes, this is to add more money into our account for overtime, just in case we need it for snow plowing, to keep our streets clean.
Ordinance number one thirty-five, two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance one thirty-five, two thousand fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the annual appropriation ordinance number twenty-six, twenty fourteen.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance one thirty-five, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Could you want Jim to say what this is? Because it's very ambiguous in the title.
Light poles.
The light poles, that's for, uh, uh, light poles throughout the city that were responsible for.
Ones that have been hit and damaged.
Yeah, they've been either damaged or they're just not working.
Moving on to ordinance one thirty-six, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance one thirty-six, two thousand fourteen, for a first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance amending ordinance ninety-nine, twenty fourteen, authorizing to transfer funds from within the service department budget to provide for current service department expenses of the City of Macedonia.
And what's your pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, before we, uh, proceed, this is for forty-five hundred dollars, and it's to transfer funds that have already been appropriated from one line item within the service department to another line item within the service department, so we can balance our funds at the end of the year. Uh, I would therefore move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance one thirty-six, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirty-seven, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one thirty-seven, two thousand and fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading through the first whereas.
Second.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
I just need to find it. Here. It just gives the explanation, then I won't be going.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the twenty-fourteen annual appropriation ordinance number twenty-six fourteen to provide for funds of the Macedonia Service Department, whereas, when originally requested per ordinance eighty-seven, twenty fourteen, which was amended on August twenty-eighth, uh, twenty fourteen, Exhibit A, nine hundred dollars from the unencumbered funds were requested be transferred to the Service Department Fund two oh one, three fifty-five, fifty-six, twenty, in order to pay invoices from income in Exhibit B. That was the only, what first whereas?
Well, you know, why don't you go through the next two, because that'll say exactly what, well, all the whereases, can we do that?
Whereas the requested funds...
Let's just get their explanation.
Whereas the requested funds were posted to Fund two oh one, three fifty-five, fifty-six, twenty, and were used by the Finance Department to pay an invoice to LBJ Inc. in the amount of nine hundred dollars, and whereas the Service Department account two oh one, three fifty-five, fifty-six, twenty currently has a balance of a hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty cents available to apply to the unpaid income invoices, and whereas it is necessary to request the transfer of the balance of nine hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy cents to Service Department two oh one, three fifty-five, fifty-six, twenty, in order to pay the income invoices.
Thank you.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance one thirty-seven, two thousand and fourteen, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance one thirty-eight, two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance one thirty-eight, two, twenty fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
In ordinance, authorizing the appropriation of funds from unaccompanied fund balance to provide for the current expense of the city of Macedonia Service Department.
Yes, indeed, this is for nine hundred, excuse me, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents to go for a service of the chamber video. So I'd like to, uh, offer ordinance one thirty-eight, twenty four, I'd like to, I move that we pass and post ordinance one thirty-eight, twenty fourteen, according to law.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirty-nine, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number one thirty-nine, two thousand fourteen, according, uh, to law, I mean, by title only, for its first, second, and third reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
I'll second, thank you.
What's it?
I needed a second, and Mrs. Tully did provide that. And now I'll read it. In ordinance, amending, uh, ordinance eighty-seven, twenty fourteen, as originally amended in August of twenty, August twenty-eighth, in which a transfer of funds meant for the Service Department Fund two oh four, two oh three, fifty-four, ten, to pay an invoice for Aqueduct was incorrectly applied to the Recreation Fund two oh four, two oh four, fifty-six, twenty.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I, I ask that we pass and post according to law ordinance number one thirty-nine, two thousand fourteen, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance number one forty, two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance one forty, two thousand fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
In ordinance, amending ordinance number eighty-seven, twenty fourteen, as originally amended August twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen, which funds requested for Service Department Fund two oh four, two oh three, fifty-four, excuse me, yes, fifty-four, forty-five, were incorrectly posted to account two oh four, two oh four, fifty-five, seventy-five.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance one forty, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
Um, are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion canceling the regular meeting of, uh, City Council for December twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, in observance of Christmas Day, and wish everybody a happy Merry Christmas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Do we have any other motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the Police Chief to accept on behalf of the city four donations to the Macedonia Police Department K-9 program as follows: one thousand dollars from General Plastex Inc., five hundred and sixty-five dollars, thirty-five cents from Telstar Productions LLC, one hundred dollars from Lolita Renee Hirschberger, and twenty-five dollars from Anita and Dennis Batter. And I'd like to thank them too.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Any other motion?
Yes, I have a motion, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer, uh, I'd like to move that we prohibit any expenditures of funds for, uh, the purposes described in the letter December fourth, for Fisher and Phillips. Uh, this particular letter, uh, there's been no appropriation to support this, which is, and then second, this is not an independent investigation. We do have independent investigations going on of Scott Schwab, our Finance Director, and we do have, uh, an investigation going on about the mayor, and they are in the hands of the, the, uh, basically the Attorney General slash Auditor and the, uh, Ohio Ethics Commission. Those are ongoing. Uh, we asked for a speedier result from, uh, referring to certainly some of these simpler issues to the Sheriff's Department, that was denied. So what we are doing is, we are following and asking for an independent outside look at both of these folks who have been alleged to have violated our laws and ordinances, and this particular expenditure is ten thousand dollars, which is a lot of money to duplicate what we're doing already.
Second.
I, I would like to disagree in the fact that the council authorized us to go out and get independent legislation or investigation in October. In fact, Mr. Engel specifically said, get names to him, he would like some information, so we could go out and we could make a choice. I am the only one who went out and found, when you say this isn't independent, I don't know any of these people. There were two names provided to me by the Employee Council, which is an agency that I've never dealt with before, but I was referred to them, that they might know because they are, um, experts in employee law, and in state law, and in city laws regarding employees, um, harassment, um, you know, runs the whole gamut. The other two names I gave were names that were provided to me by the Prosecutor of Joga County. Don't know these people at all, don't know any of the four. I handed those to City Council. No one, I believe, read them, as far as I know, because we've had zero discussion. I provided them and asked at the last meeting when those were presented to have a selection made by Monday. It is unfair to Mr. Schwab, it is unfair to the city that we do not go forth with an investigation as we had originally chosen of City Council members to do an independent investigation outside any criminal auditors or stated attorney general. So that's, um, the mayor took the four names, and the mayor made a choice to go forth with what City Council had already said they wanted to proceed with. So I'm confused when it said, we never said we'd do an independent investigation. I'm also confused when you say these are not independent, um, investigators because they don't work for the city, they don't work for anyone on this D S, they don't work for the Law Department, they don't work for anyone other than this community. So that statement is questionable from the standpoint that these are independent people from an organization who specializes in that activity. Ms. Tully, can I?
Dave wants to say something.
Since, since I made the motion, the motion was made with the understanding that, that we would interview people, make a decision. Uh, we got a, um, a handout from you at the end of a, of a work session, I think, and if you did in fact then say you wanted a decision the next day at another meeting, I don't remember that, I'm not denying that, saying, I'm not saying you didn't say that, I just don't remember. But there's been no, uh, interview process, which we discussed, there's been no, uh, chance to talk to these people, and, uh, the mayor is making the, uh, the call on a, uh, on a piece of, uh, investigation of, uh, a decision he made, and that's why I don't think it's independent, and that's why I don't support it.
Well, I, I, let me just rebut a couple of statements here. We have provided all of the information to the, uh, two independent bodies. That one choice was made by someone independent of us, the Police Chief, but the auditor has this for action, uh, after the Attorney General referred it to the auditor, and this also has been referred to the Ohio Ethics Commission for extensive review, so.
But you did that without, uh, saying, council, according to minutes, you didn't announce that until council meeting and said, I've already sent it off. Council had never agreed to that as a whole.
Well, it's, it's already been sent, Mrs. Tully. It has been sent, and the Law Department sent, uh, stuff to the Ethics, Ethics Commission also. So what I'm saying to you is this, these are two bodies which are already designated, and they're outside of us, we're not being charged for these things. This is a firm that has been selected by the mayor, and without a discussion with us, without any kind of agreement on approach, what we're to cover, anything, and I say this was not approved before, it is not approved now, and I'm just, a motion confirming that this is not an independent investigation, and it is not the intent of that resolution that was originally passed, and I'm simply saying now, uh, I move that we prohibit expenditure of any funds on this item because it is a waste of money, and we do have these different independent investigations already in progress. So as far as I'm concerned, uh, I think we need to proceed and call the question.
I have more discussion, Joe.
Yes, Mayor, uh, first, first of all.
Excuse me, can you pull the public microphone over?
I think this one works now.
They left a note.
They put a big blue note on here saying it works. First of all, the, the, um.
Joe, Dave's up, Dave wants to ask you something.
I think a question was called.
Questions?
I don't think so, I think there's still comment.
Yeah, well, I, we're still having the discussion.
I called the question. Well, I called the question.
Sorry, you want to silence the Law Department on an issue relating to an investigation we committed? It already was completed, we were independent in making our investigation and making our findings. Now, I hear Ms. Hannekin saying that she thinks the Police Chief is independent, why not let our own Police Department do the investigation then for no additional funds? It was not my idea to send it to the auditor, to the Attorney General, to anyone else, I've made my recommendations, council, three council members chose not to accept those recommendations. So you said you wanted someone independent. Now, this is a person I don't know, the mayor didn't know, no one knew, that he has retained to go ahead and do this, so I don't understand, uh, if you think our Police Department can do it, I think that's a great idea, let's let them do it.
Let's call the question, please.
Not only that, but, um, we have to bring closure to this incident, so something has to be done, we can't go on the way we are. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What is the?
Call a question.
Roll call. Roll call. You want to repeat the motion?
No.
I move, I can repeat.
I'm doing roll call now. Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
I'm out of order, you're making me pay attention. Um, I'm voting to retain and keep this person, so my vote is no, because the mayor has the authority to expend without authorization of City Council. The mayor, you know, it amazes me that we have a conversation in the back room, we have a conversation on the floor, and then we come out here and say, no, we never agreed to any of this, and go off and do our own thing. I'm voting no, I agree that we retain an independent counselor as the mayor has chosen to do. This is not fair to the residents of this city to continue paying someone sitting at home when we all agreed from the first blush that we get an independent investigator to care for this.
Mr. Uh.
Mulner.
Mulner, I forgot.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions before I vote. Um, Mr. Deemer, can or cannot the mayor expend up to ten thousand dollars without council approval?
That's a question he's asked the, uh, the Finance Department, and they have indicated there are monies appropriated for that purposes, so.
So he's within his rights and council cannot overturn his ability to do that?
Council can pass any motion they want, and.
Right.
That's what this would be.
Uh, another question. With Mr. Schwab being on administrative leave, should he have anything to do with, anything to do with the city whatsoever, budget, or anything of that nature?
No, he's been prohibited from doing that.
We have emails admitting that our Finance Chair has worked with him on this budget.
What are we going to do, add on to the dozen charges already against him for violating the mayor's, uh, uh, order?
I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not looking at.
I don't think those would be accepted by the majority of council either, because they're the ones doing it, so.
Uh, what I'm trying to point out is, guilty or innocent, he should not have had hands on this whatsoever. Sylvia, you've admitted in an email that you are working with him, and I'm, I'm deeply troubled by that.
Sir, he is being paid as a Finance Director, I am working with him, the mayor can prohibit him talking to anybody who is working for the city. I am an independent legislator, and I did speak with him, but the basic decisions that are about this, this was for technical advice, as I've repeated to you several times. Now, what, what I'm saying to you also is this, that this is not, simply not independent, it is the mayor asking, the mayor fired the Finance Director, we restored him to duty, and the fact is that he has not accepted that. So even though that is the charter, he must have a majority of.
No, that's not the charter, you overstepping your bounds, you're getting into administration.
We are.
The charter gives the mayor total authority overall.
No, it does not give him authority to fire the Finance Director if the majority of the council does not concur, and you know that, sir.
It's a power struggle.
Now, let me offer my.
One mayor against another.
Let's offer, I want to offer my final motion.
I'm still, it's my turn to talk and vote, so if you allow me to finish, please, I'd like to. The point I'm trying to make is, I mean, whether or not you feel he's guilty or innocent, working with him i- is unprofessional and irresponsible in my mind. There, there is no reason to be working with someone who's on administrative leave until you know for sure he's proven innocent. If he's found guilty and he worked on our budget, that serves our community, what does that say? What does that say?
He has not worked on anything, I have produced the budget. He has simply given me technical advice about how to approach including something or excluding it, that's it. That is nothing wrong.
You told us you worked with him, you talked to him on a daily basis, you said that in the meeting.
I said, I didn't say, I said when I was preparing the budget, I spoke with him, but I, I'm, I'm not even defending anything other than I have every right to speak to him, he's on paid administrative leave, he's guilty of nothing, just like the, the mayor has not guilty of theft in office.
So you're saying he's innocent? Hey, he's innocent, you're saying?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying he's not been proven guilty. He is on paid administrative leave, he is not fired, and that is the condition we're doing.
He is, he, he.
He is not fired, Don.
You have overstepped your bounds.
Well, we have not, sir.
And we have a mess, and the mayor's going to get it cleaned up by getting someone with another opinion as to whether there's worthy charges or not.
And we were going to get a, someone, we're going to get an independent person to check into the charges against you too. That'd be great, we don't need to do this.
There's a big difference.
There is not a big difference.
There's a big difference, you got this thick, a stack.
That thick doesn't mean a thing.
And then you've got something that can't be proved that I was even aware of.
Well, sir, we will find out about that, but that's an independent person, you can't be doing that.
Well, isn't it funny that the Service, that the Finance Director pointed this out, like maybe he knew about it, and maybe he should have told me about it before he.
No, maybe he shouldn't have paid it, that's another violation.
Yeah, he shouldn't have paid.
Well, sir, let's, let's go on to the next motion, because I'm sure we all want to.
It's still my turn to speak.
Excuse me, I haven't voted. Second of all, I thought we had an agreement that we would talk about stuff in work session. This was never discussed, period. Yes, and neither was this letter either, dear. That is just absolutely. Excuse me, don't call me dear, I'm not your dear. Well, I'm just saying to you, you did not. I did not hire, I handed you, so what? I know, you did, but you were involved in this, right? That's what you just said, you're involved. He's allowed to, he's the mayor. Well, he's allowed to, but this is a business that we all agreed on, and it was not involving the mayor. And did any one of you bother to read any of the forms? Sure, this. Did any of us get together, Dave, you were to call us together and talk about this, you said you would take charge.
And I also asked.
It never happened. We're now into month number what, four or five with the guy getting paid sitting at home, talking to you daily about our budget.
I don't know why there's.
When you have a resident who stands up here and says he should have zero activity with our budget. My concern is you have overstepped, the administration is allowed to hire independent counsel, and they're allowed to spend, it's more than ten thousand dollars, I believe, without any approval of council.
We just made a motion that said no.
Right, and we passed it, so let's.
Yeah, I'm still voting, I can still finish if you don't mind.
Too late. Too late.
I just want to, I don't know why we're having all this argument about the budget and the process of how it went through and, and who talked to who. We've all known that, that Sylvia was talking to Scott, and we all passed the budget unanimously, so let's move on on that issue.
I totally can complete my vote, my vote would be an absolute and complete no, and the reasons why I've stated.
So are you wanting to change the budget?
No, he's talking about the motion.
No. The budget, what I'm trying to point out is there, you know, we got a bit of a power struggle here, and, and it's, it's getting a little ridiculous, you know, we, we have found some things that were hidden today about raises with department heads and council taking over power with that, you know, the mayor's here to do a job just like councils, and that's all I want to say about it. You can do what you want to do, you can hide things and not say anything about them, but at the end of the day, this is the way it's supposed to work. So why keep fighting and having the power struggle between the mayor and you? I don't get it.
It's not a power struggle, sir.
Oh, yes, it is.
Well, that's why you look at everything, but I do not. We try, we, listen.
I look at it.
Yes, that's always.
It's very obvious, it happens every meet.
No, it doesn't, on, on only certain issues. I'm proud to say we didn't pass the increase in taxes that you were pushing for. In fact, we, the residents did not have to have increased taxes.
Well, wait a minute now, you're putting something into this discussion again that's malarkey. That increase in taxes, you're saying that I wanted, would have got something done that you did not allow, and that was, this is the first time I've never fixed a road and paid for it cash because of you.
No, sir. Anyway, let's move on. That is not true, you made the decision about the timing of that, you did it yourself. Let me move on, and I have another motion, so that we can all get through this tonight. Uh, I move that we restore Mr. Schwab to duty, there is no reason to, for him not to be on duty, and if we move ahead and we, we can then determine if there is any reason why either you or Mr. Schwab should not, should be separated by the city, then we will go ahead. So I move that we bring Mr. Schwab back to duty. I would move that we table that until we have discussion. Again, we have had discussions. We've had. You're saying, first of, there is no power struggle. That is a pure power struggle. When we said we'd go for independent, you forwarded to the Ohio Attorney General without telling anybody. I did not do that, sir, ma'am. Yes, you did, you said you forwarded against the mayor and Finance Director to the Ohio Attorney General. Yeah, that's incorrect, that's why we didn't. You also sent it to the Ohio Ethics Commission. We are a party of five, this is not your council vote. I did not. And so you get the three to vote, bring him back, we haven't finalized if he's guilty or innocent. Correct. It is not.
And you're going to bring him back?
That's right, because accusations and allegations, you have not fired him, he has not gone, he is being paid, he's being paid.
You can't bring him back.
You can't bring him back.
We can bring him back.
No, you can't.
Well, uh, according to, we're going to have a motion on that, we'll make a decision.
You cannot bring him back.
You make him all the motions you want, he's not coming back.
Okay, sir, then. You can make a motion to bring him back, and the mayor can put him on administrative leave the minute we're done. I mean, what, why can't you just? I mean, what, why can't you just let independent investigation proceed?
Because this is not an independent investigation. This is malarkey.
It is malarkey, you talk about. Have you talked to her? Have you called her? Do you know anything about her?
Yes, this woman's had her license suspended for several months back in 2006 because she failed to meet the education, re-education requirements. Yes, I know about her.
Okay, so Mr. Schwab never got a finance degree, but he's our Finance Director.
Well, you asked me.
Did we hold on to that?
You asked me a question.
No.
He is, he has a master's degree in public administration.
Did you call her or did you just Google her? You just Googled her. Did you call her? Did you talk to the office?
Well, I am not going to-
Did you raise your question or concern to the mayor?
Can we move?
No.
Call the question.
We don't have a question.
Motion to adjourn.
I would-
Seconds.
Okay, good night.